We're streaming live on Facebook.
But it tells me we're setting up for it, but yes. All right, I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for December 21st. At the outset, I will point out that we are under ordinance 1,000 rules allowing for virtual meeting. Here on Zoom, I can see councilmember Steve Mosley, councilmember Ken Saunders, councilmember Chad Gardner, and of course, in the room, we have councilmembers Holt, Vapurzian, and Tieran. Present, so we have the quorum absent from the meeting are councilmembers Marion Scott and Terrance Williams, both of whom were unavailable to be with us. So with that, I've asked councilmember Vapurzian to lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for the blessings that you have given to us. And as this evening, we look toward the eastern sky and see a star, a wonderful reminder of the greatest gift ever given to mankind and the person of Jesus Christ, your son. We thank you. In a time when there is such unrest from health to political things and just a myriad of things that are going on in our lives that we don't have a firm grasp on. Our help and our hope is found in you because you see tomorrow before we'll ever get up, you know what's gonna happen. And you said, put our trust and hope in you, that all would be taken care of. And so God, tonight, we do that. Bless our councilmembers who are home, those who may not be feeling well, those who are awaiting tests, those who are on vacation with family. Our first responders, as they are so willing to take the lead, our hospital staffs, those who are out there taking care of people that are in such need. God, may our eyes be open and may our hearts be warm to help those who are perhaps less fortunate. Our men and women overseas who are away from family, supply the freedoms that we have, we thank you. May we make wise decisions this evening. I thank you again for your love and for your blessings and for your son, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. The next order of business is for me to change the camera angle. And then Employee of the Month. So very quickly. Everyone knows I'm catching up on these a little bit as we took a bit of a hiatus when we were meeting virtually. But for June 2020, the employee of the month is Misty Swier. Misty, yay! So what I'd like to do is read a proclamation. Misty, come on down and join me up here. Okay, now that's spooky seeing myself on camera right here. So let me read this proclamation. This is a proclamation meaning Misty Swier is the mayor's employee of the month for June 2020 and declaring December 22nd, 2020, to be Misty Swier Day in the city of Mammell. Whereas Misty Swier has taken ownership of her cafe supervisor position with her work ethic, skill, knowledge, organization, communication supervising skills, and initiative. Whereas her upbeat attitude on a daily basis brings a positive working environment to not only her fellow employees, but also to all the members, volunteers, and guests of the Mammell Center on the Way. Whereas Misty continues to take on more responsibilities, improving cafe services, reducing costs of meals, and providing essential meals at the Mammell Center on the Way. Whereas one of her biggest accomplishments of 2020 was continued nutrition services during the COVID-19 pandemic and implementing safety safeguards within the cafe for staff, volunteers, and members. Let me tell you, that was a big undertaking. Whereas on a daily basis, Misty Swier demonstrates how much she cares about the emergency services its members in the city of Mammell with her positive upbeat attitude. Now therefore, I, Caleb Morris, Mayor of Mammell, do hereby declare Misty Swier to be the mayor's employee of the month for June 2020 and hereby proclaim December 22nd, 2020, to be Misty Swier Day in the city of Mammell. Let's get a picture here. And it all looks like there's people behind us. Three. Awesome. Thank you very much. And you could give a speech and tell us all how hard you worked. Again, thank you.
I, this is amazing. I wasn't expecting this. And I enjoy working there. I love it. I love the people. And I just appreciate this, you guys. But Misty Swier Day, that's hilarious. So thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Next up, next up, I want to take a minute to recognize an individual who has been involved with the city in one train or another for decades, if not before that. And I want to recognize Doug Ladner, who served as the city's liaison. Doug, come on up here. I know a lot of y'all know Doug from his time when he was on the council. How many years were you on the city council, Doug? A little over 10 years. And what we have here is recognition and appreciation for his services on the Joint Emergency Medical Services Board, and that service extends from 1998 to 2020, so 22 years. And I also have Mr. John Swanson with Men's here, executive director, who also came to recognize Doug's service on that board as well. You want to hop on up here? As well. So what I have here is just a quick pack. Let's move out of the way of the podium so we can snap some pictures. Why don't you hop in the middle? Here we go. Here we go. Well, great. And thank you very much, Doug. And I've also asked John to say a few words here. We can just make sure to pick it up on the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the invitation tonight to be able to represent the board of directors at Men's and on behalf of our chair, Jennifer Pierce, who's not able to be here herself, but a sincere thanks. And on a personal level, Doug, I've worked with you myself for the 22 years. We about started at the same time. And throughout, you've been a tremendous supporter, not only representing the interests of the city of Mammell, but for all the men and women at Men's, and your appreciation and knowledge of what their day-to-day activities are and the job and what it takes to do that job. And so on behalf of the men and women of Men's, in addition, to thank you for your support and on a personal level, thank you very much for all you've done to help me learn and perform my role. And so it's a very small token. In the military, we call this the "I love me" wall. So there's something else for you to say, but again, Doug, thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kidding. No, it's been great for 22 years representing Mammell. And I know that the gentleman that's taking my place will do as well or a much better job than me, but you can't find a better group of people than Men's. And John came in from the Air Force knowing nothing, and now he knows everything. He has taken the classes. He is a medical, let me see, you're an EMT? EMT? And so I think he's done a great job working with our fire here in Mammell, helping them to pass and get the EMTs as well. But anyway, thank you. It's been a good ride.
I'd like to just say a couple of words about Mr. Ladner and thank him for his service. I first, I first met Doug, I think, back in 2001. He was running for the first city council after the change of government. And I think he won, and he's was on the board until 2012 and has participated in a number of things. He's helped, he started a couple of committees to try to beautify the city and some things like that. He's just done a lot of things over the years, and I don't know if a lot of people remember, but he needs, he needs to be recognized for somebody that's contributed a lot to Mammell. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct, Councilmember Mosley. And it's one of the reasons I wanted to recognize him. 22 years of service doing any one thing or anything at all is a lot, saying and remaining vigilant on a single board. Takes someone special who's really vested in the community and enjoys what they're doing. I presume you enjoyed it, or you would have been gone a while back. So with that, just to let y'all know, the replacement for Doug, I have appointed RJ Mizony to the position. I haven't, I haven't warned John Swanson just yet, but RJ is one of the budget hawks, and so I said, someone will keep track of the budget over there. Although I have no doubt whatsoever that y'all are doing a great job, and RJ's already said that, I believe he's attended a few meetings. Just wanted to notify everyone that. And thank you very much for coming out, John. I really appreciate it. Well, thank you. So the next order of business is the approval of the December 7th regular meeting minutes. Y'all should have received the copy in the packet. Is there any discussion? Motion to approve? We have a motion second to approve the minutes of the December 7th regular city council meeting. Is there any discussion? Remember, I'm not seeing raised hands. If you do have discussion, discuss. Seeing that, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. I have not received any public comment cards from anyone in the public. And so with that, we will move on to the financial statement review with, with Ms. Mathis. Ms. Timmons, if you could go ahead and share that.
Good evening. Well, she gets our screen share up. I'll kind of go on and get started here a little bit. We're looking at the November 30th financials now, so we're mostly the way through December, but we're, and wrapping up the year nicely, but we're taking a look at the end of November. So if we don't get those slides up, I will tell you, we're also on page four. I'm kind of looking at page four of the financial packet, so you could also follow along there. We're having tech fun tonight. Oh, here we go. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and go. On page four, we're looking at the general fund revenues first. Our county millage tax, we've been talking about the timing on this. We finally got that second large payment. And so right now, we're trending ahead of budget year-to-date about $44,000 and slightly ahead of the prior year. And the December payment is about $32,000, so we will end the year around $106,000 under budget in that category. Our franchise fees are ahead of budget year-to-date and behind the prior year just a little bit. That may be the timing of some receipts. I didn't dig too much into that, but it should level off by the end of the year. Our state turnback funds, those are trending behind budget year-to-date and slightly behind the prior year. We've talked about that. The states withholding those. Hopefully, we'll get them back next year, and that'll just be a little bit of added bonus since we did not budget for an increase next year. County sales tax, the November's report represents our taxes collected for sales in September, which are ahead of budget, $55,000 and $154,000 more than the prior year. Our city sales tax is also $53,000 ahead of our budget year-to-date and $256,000 ahead of the prior year. This number also represents taxes collected through September and eight out of the nine months of that $364,000 payback. So by the end of December, we'll have that all caught back up. The police department, we're $171,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, $465,000 ahead of the prior year. This is, again, we've talked about the 911 dispatch funds and a lot of the turnback funds and the change in accounting, how those are recorded year-over-year, so that accounts for some of that. But they're expenses that are $290,000 ahead of the prior year, so that's part of that offset. You can see that change in expenses in the year-over-year as well. Same thing for the fire department, $35,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $267,000 ahead of the prior year. Expenses are 316, so that makes up for that difference there. And parks and recreation and senior wellness, both still behind budget year-to-date and the prior year, but both of them also still have expenses under budget more than what their revenues are down. So one of the things to note on our revenues overall, overall, we are only $26,000, or $28,000 under budget year-to-date or behind our budget year-to-date on revenue. So when it all nets together, we're only $28,000 behind where we anticipated being this time of the year. And that's $670,000 more than revenues the same time last year. So in a pretty good position at the end of November there. Looking then on the next slide at our expenditures, it'll still be on page four if you're actually looking at the packet. It's just the bottom half of the page. Expenditures at all departments of the general fund remain under budget year-to-date. Those coronavirus relief funds are going to reimburse the general fund in December. That's when all of that money came through and is finalizing. The budget amendment that you're looking at today will also support reclassifying some expenses from the general fund to the street fund. Overall, operating expenses are $1.2 million under budget year-to-date. So I think that speaks very highly of all of the staff who've really done an excellent job of getting things accomplished, but holding back on spending as much as they possibly could this year. So if we look then at our general fund balance, we've been talking about this and looking at this for the last few months here. And we're still working on trying to get this number more accurate every month that we look at it. But as of the end of November, we're $214,000 below the required minimum balance. You're looking at a, Tina, if you would like to flip to the next slide, I don't know if you can on that one. I had a little summary on there. Now go back to the council meeting packet, the slides. Okay, maybe not. What you're looking at there, there's a resolution in front of you tonight that would move.
What page do you want me to go to?
Go to the other PDF file.
This one?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And scroll down one. Go to the next page.
This one?
Yep, that one right there. Okay. So as of right now, the, the general fund is $214,000 under the required minimum. Before you tonight is a resolution that would move funds from the general fund to the street fund. These were the similar things that we moved in our 2021 budget. And so we have the opportunity to come back and reclassify those. Now that would cover us, trying to look at, got it right in front of me here. That adjustment will move $214,930 out of the general fund, which would pretty much put us back to just having the required minimums in there. In addition, you passed an amendment, a resolution at the last meeting on December 7th, which of course isn't recorded in these financials, because it happened in December, that will put an additional $327,000 towards that minimum balance. So that's going to kind of put us in a much better position for year-end, back to meeting our ordinance requirement for a minimum in our general fund. Moving on to the street fund, it's ahead of budget on revenues. The county millage tax, $43,000 and $52,000 ahead of the prior year-to-date. $9,000 in December that we're going to get will end us the year about $3,000 ahead of budget. So did a great job there. State turnback funds are also trending slightly ahead of budget in the prior year. They didn't hold back these street funds, so those are the same. On the expenditure side, both personnel and operating expenses in the street fund remain under budget for the year, even after we did those reclassifications earlier this year. And the current available street fund balance at the end of November was $4.8 million. And so when we talk about this resolution we're looking at later on in the meeting, we'd be talking about reducing that fund balance by about $214,000 out of that $4.8 million. On our sanitation fund, revenues are $72,000 behind the budget year-to-date and slightly behind the prior year's receipt. I think there's also something in your packet from CAW about this continued shut-off. They're working really, really hard to try to get people to agree to payments on those accounts and things like that that are delinquent. Their operating expenses are $68,000 under budget yesterday, year-to-date, and $10,000 less than the prior year. And the personnel side is $156,000 behind budget year-to-date and $96,000 more than the previous year. Put a little bit more in the packet, didn't have more on the slides, on the police and fire fund. It's $26,000 ahead of the budget year-to-date, which is also kind of trending right along with all those other sales tax revenues. The FEMA grant fund, we probably won't see much more movement on that this year. Most of that project's going to happen next year, so we've put the general fund allocation as a match towards that in 2020, and so that fund will kind of just the reimbursements and all of that will happen within that fund without having to affect the general fund as we finish that project up. And then our COVID-19 relief fund, there's some movement in that in November. A lot of it's going to finish up by, in December. So we received all of our funds from that early in November, and the resolution passed at the last meeting will move some of that money. And so that fund by the end of the year will end up with a zero balance. We will have closed that out per the terms of that grant and finished that up. That's all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you. Is there any discussion, Councilmember Vapurzian, with the new relief pending? Is there anything that you see available for cities like Mammell?
I think from what I've read so far, additional relief to cities and towns may have been what Congress pulled out of that to reach a bipartisan agreement. So I'm not aware of anything yet. If there is additional funding for cities and towns that comes out of that second relief package, I'm sure that the state will utilize the same system they've already now built and implemented for this other funding to help distribute that to the cities and towns, and very likely, since that system is already in place and they've got a whole process set up, it might, it would likely run much faster, and we would see those funds sooner.
All right. Thank you. Is there any additional discussion?
Motion to approve November's financials.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second to accept the financials. If there's no discussion on that, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mathis, for a thorough financial statement and account of that statement. The next order of business is the planning commission report. Councilmember Williams was unable to make it this evening. So we'll save that for the next meeting. At this time, I'd entertain a motion, have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Outstanding, the first order, first and only order of unfinished business is the second reading of ordinance 1019, amending the Mammell City Code. Madam City Court Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1019, and ordinance amending multiple sections of the Mammell City Code to require storm water management and drainage facilities to be designed and constructed to manage a 25-year expectancy events in residential areas and for other purposes.
Thank you. So this was on first reading at the last council meeting. Just as a quick refresher, if passed, this would allow and require developers of new subdivisions to improve, improve their flood detention. And that's residential subdivision. So with that, if there's no discussion, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. All right, moving on to new business, we have the resolution 2020-37, amending a 2020 general fund budget. Madam City Court Treasurer, if you can read that by title only, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2020-37, a resolution to amend the 2020 general and street fund budgets.
Thank you. Just as a refresher, Ms. Mathis just talked about this a little bit during the financial statement review. As a reminder, for next year's budget, we found certain items that we pay for out of the street, or the general fund, that are better allocated to the street fund. For example, street lights. We currently pay for that or paid for that out of the general fund where we can use street fund monies to do that. So what this resolution does is say for 2020, for this year, we're going to reallocate those expenses from the general fund to the street fund, and that would free up $214,000 in the general fund for them.
Motion to approve resolution 2020-37.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I've got a question. As far as the, there's some expenses related to the senior services transportation program, and I was wondering how much that might be that's in this resolution tonight, and also just, just your comments on how that falls under the category or can fall under the category of street fund.
Sure. So if you look at the resolution itself, I think that's basically everything except for the street lights. And the liability insurance. And so what that does is the Department of Senior Services runs a transportation system. And in fact, we usually get federal grants to purchase some of the equipment that they run. Public transit systems can be used for, street funds can be used to fund public transit systems. Matter of fact, we pay our metro, our Little Rock metro fees comes out of the street fund, and that's money that's going for a public transit system. So it's basically that same thing. What we've done is taken those employees that are part of senior services that are working directly, or at least partially, in transportation and allocated either all or portions of their salary and benefits from the general fund to the street fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, was there a motion in second? Yes, sir. All ready? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you all. That concludes new business, and we'll move on to mayor's comments. First and perhaps most noteworthy is recognition of the outgoing council members, which are Councilmember Marion Scott, who announced at the last council meeting that she wouldn't be able to attend this, and of course, Councilmember John Vapurzian. Just as a fun little thing, I first met John when I was campaigning for city council back in 2012, and I was holding signs out on Edgewood, and he is his late wife were also holding signs for someone out there, and he just kept asking a lot of questions about what was going on. And me being a, not even elected city council member yet, of course, knew everything and told him all about everything he needed to know. But whatever it was, he became interested when I vacated my seat for to become the city attorney. The city council appointed John there, and it's been a real pleasure working with him. As someone who has a real public servant's heart, I hope he doesn't disappear, and I hope he remains around and throwing tomatoes from the peanut gallery occasionally. But with that, what I wanted to do is present John with the plaque, so if you'll please join me up there. But with that, what I wanted to do is present John with a plaque. So if you'll please join me up there. And really quickly, what this says is the City of Mammell presents to John Vapurzane in recognition and appreciation for your dedication, dedicated service on the Mammell City Council from 2015 to 2020. So. Let's move out of the microphone there and you straighten the time.
One, two, three. One, two.
Great. Well, thank you, John. So I also wanted to take a moment to introduce someone who y'all may have been seeing snapping some photographs in the council meeting, and that is the new communications coordinator, Mr. Joseph Hardy, who joins us. We're very excited. I think that you guys are in store for some pretty good content being put out. Welcome, please be as nice to him as you were to his predecessor and welcome. Also, I wanted to point out COVID is really running rampant out there. I would strongly encourage everyone to do what you can to prevent the spread, you know. We're all sick and tired of it, but please continue to be mindful. It's, 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 it's going, it's roaring. And with that, the next question goes on to Zoom. We finally got the AV bridge, which is what's allowing everyone to see Zoom and to participate sort of in this hybrid format here. I think this format works and can continue to work with both the benefits of meeting live and for those who want to or need to social distance and stay home or quarantine to be able to participate in a meaningful manner. That said, I want to open it up to a discussion on that with the outbreak continuing. Do we want to continue this hybrid or move completely digital? I know some cities are moving virtual. Is there any preference?
I think I understand what we're talking about here. I would like the option to do virtual meetings and you and I talked about that briefly today. And I think, I think this meeting that we have tonight and the format that we're doing it in is, would work for me fine. And I will attend some meetings and some meetings I won't. And so this is fine with me, what we're doing tonight, if it works for everybody.
Okay. Well, if there's no one who thinks we need to go all virtual, and I'm certainly not in favor of going all live at this point. But we'll continue doing what we're doing. With that, we'll move on to council member comments.
I've got a couple, if nobody else does. I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the Christmas parade yesterday. I participated. I drove in the parade and it was a lot of fun. There was a lot of people that came out and actually was along the parade route, a lot of little kids. And it was great fun. I think everybody that was in the parade had a good time. I'd mentioned also that I noticed in the vitriol for a gentleman named Larry Pruss. That may not ring a bell to a lot of people, but he worked for years for MWM. If you ever had contact with MWM for a problem, it was likely Mr. Pruss that came out to your house to oversee getting it fixed or fixing it himself. In fact, I remember one night a storm had come up and a tree had broken the super pipe behind my house. He and a team of fellows came out and they were dodging lightning bolts, fixing that pipe out there in the dark. And he was kind of the guy that I think was Mr. Fixit around, around MWM. And just a nice, nice gentleman. And I just wanted to kind of honor him here tonight. My final comment was I just also wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with both Ms. Scott and John Vapurzane. And I wish, wish both of you all well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Also, with regards to the parade, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the group that was originally going to put on the parade decided to do different, something else this year. And a resident, Mr. Derek Fudge Slater jumped up and proactively said that by golly, we want to continue to have a parade. I reached out to him pretty early and we were able to partner, but the meat and potatoes of that, organizing it and spreading the word was done by a resident. And that's one of the things that that I really enjoy about Mammell is when people decide that they want to get something done, they don't, they don't always just sit off on the side and tell you to do it. There's people who are willing to roll up their sleeves. So thank you to Derek for that. Is there any other council member comments?
I have my light on. I don't.
No lights working today, sir. Floor is yours.
Well, I don't have a parish speech. I just wanted to say that in regards to our two council members who are departing, it's always a loss. You lose a friend that you, I remember Marion and I used to sit out in the audience together and we were sort of egging each other on to maybe, why don't you get on the council? Why don't you get on the council? We both got on it and also met John for the very first time. He was with you and we were at City, a big event that we have once a year. And met him for the first time. He's enthusiastic, to say the least. But I've enjoyed having him as a associate and being, we became close friends and it'll certainly be a loss to serve and stand for me as well as Marion. It's always out with the old and in with the new. But, you know, we have two great new members coming in. But I hope that both of these members, now that they have had a training and experience and a taste of what it is to be a servant in the city, I hope they will stay close and continue to be active. And they can be as productive in their own way as they are just to sit here and vote. So looking forward to them being, continued being around and they will be missed, remembered, and hopefully enjoy their future friendship. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I'd also like to express my appreciation to Mr. Vapurzane and Ms. Tony for their service and the great input, and they will be missed. And we'd like to thank them for the service. And I'd also like to wish everybody a wonderful holiday coming up.
Thank you. It's always the last meeting when you say goodbye, it's always sad. And then next month it'll be happy as we welcome new members. Any additional council member comments?
I must have had my farewell speech.
You must have your farewell speech. Here, let me zoom in on you.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's a better spot there. Kind of looks like the back of my head. Yeah. No, just again, thanks to everyone and former Mayor Watson and Mayor Norris for the kindness and generosity when I call, they answer the phone. Had no idea what I didn't know until I found out I didn't know it. I'll never forget being interviewed. There was six or seven of us that went after your, your seat. And I was asked the question from behind the podium in the old T-Cup, James, how would I deal with my constituents? And I thought I'd gotten that vaccine as a child, but I didn't know what a constituent was. And just kind of winged it through, but so many people, all the department heads that I called upon. Ms. Judy took me around for hours around the city and showed me everything that was going on and between she and Jack Stone were so kind. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful time. And now as our family, we're relocating to the Osage neighborhood. I'm looking forward to, to living there. And best of luck to those who are coming on, the RJ and the Doug. And do yourself a favor and educate yourself, get with these people because they know what they're doing. They know what they're talking about. And just again, it's been an honor and thanks to everyone. And thank you to Chad for keeping COVID to himself.
So. Yes. Any additional council member comments? All right, city attorney comments?
I just also want to express my appreciation and best wishes to the council members, Vapurzane and Councilmember Scott. And I did go ahead and do a square training with our council members last week, so I would be ready to go first of the year.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk Treasurer?
Just housekeeping, there should be a sign up sheet for those of you who are there. If you could please sign up to be a planning commission liaison. If somebody could sign up for January, that would be awesome. Bette, if you want to sign up for Doug, I'm totally okay with it. I'll email it out for the council members who aren't in attendance. I'll send that out to you guys, but I just want to make sure those who are present do sign that up, sign up for that. That's important. Councilmember Mosley, thank you for recognizing Larry. He was a great guy, hard worker. And we were fortunate enough to hire him on as part of the city team after he left C A W. So there were a lot of people who, you know, who are going to miss him. It's unfortunate time. And then council member Vapurzane, Bette, as I affectionately refer to him as, I'm going to miss seeing you. It's not goodbye, it's see you later. And I just have so much respect for you. There are so many humanitarian things that you have done for the city of Mammell, the Mammell proper area that you don't, you've never broadcast, but I am totally aware of it. I love your humble spirit. Thank you for being an example of a Christian man. I appreciate it. And finally, really quick, council member Gardner, I like how you coordinated your shirt with your background. Thumbs up on that. Finally, I do want to wish everyone happy, safe holidays. COVID is rampant. Don't take it for granted. Stay vigilant, wash your hands, mask up, stay distant and stay away from super spreader events. Be well.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, city offices are closed December 24th and 25th. Everyone, please have a Merry Christmas. With that, in keeping with our tradition, the outgoing council member gets to make the motion to adjourn, though I'm sure he's going to do it anyways. Councilmember Vapurzane, motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Didn't think so. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Merry Christmas.
See you, John.